Uh, the first thing we'll do is to call the roll.
Hildegard Agüinaldo, Darius Anderson, Arnaldo Valles.
President.
Jeff Baum, Connie Conway, Amy Costa.
Here.
Tom Epstein.
Here.
Jolena Grande.
Here.
Pam Haynes.
Here.
Kevin Hall, Jennifer Perry, Man Fawn.
Here.
Bill Rawlings.
Here.
Valerie Shaw.
Here.
Blasvia Lobos.
Here.
Alex Walker Griffin.
Here.
Alexis Saragosa.
Here.
Okay, it's time for the Pledge of Allegiance. Um, Arnaldo, I ask you to lead.
Please stand, put your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so, um, the, uh, the agenda is, is in front of you. It's a pretty basic agenda. We are going to leave in closed session after, uh, after the President, the President's report, or after the, uh, Heather, uh, the CEO's report. I'm not sure what we're calling. Um, and, uh, otherwise, we will continue, um, the agenda as it is, and then you'll have the really exciting opportunity to watch us learn how to use Board Docs at the end of this meeting. Um, I'm sure that there's a lot of interest in that. Um, okay, just, um, as the President's report, I'm delighted to say that for the first time, we actually have a CEO sitting here. Um, and, uh, we're very excited about that. Heather and I have met a few ti- have met a few times, and, um...
So I think everyone's laughing because the Chancellor, um, for the Board of Trustees is sitting in the audience with this huge smile on his face. I'm not certain what that's about.
They put a name tag for it. Yeah.
Oh, no.
That's what, that's what we're afraid of. Um, so, so, uh, as I said, we're delighted. We, we're making progress, and, uh, I just want to encourage, uh, the external world to, um, to be patient. That, uh, we're going to be doing a lot of outreach. We're, uh, moving fast and trying not to break things, and, uh, we hope that the, uh, that everybody will see the wisdom in, in the direction we're headed, and everybody will have input into, uh, into helping us figure out how to do this best. And with that, I will turn it over. Uh... Oh, oh, I'm sorry. No, you're the President. You, uh...
No.
Oh, no, I'm the President, yes. I'm the CEO. This President thing, because I guess I'm supposed to be Chair of the Board of Trustees and President. I'm not sure. We need to fix up the nomenclature here, but, okay. Uh, thank you.
Can I just have a little coffee?
Maybe a tequila. Okay, so let's do the minutes. Um... Do we? Yeah, I got it. I got it. So do we have a, um, a motion on the minutes?
So moved.
It's a tie. Uh, let's give it to, uh, Jolena, and Bill can do the, uh, was it Bill or Darius? Darius who did the, um, second. And, uh, all right.
Darius Anderson.
Yeah.
Arno- did he? Arnaldo Valles, Connie Conway.
We're voting, we're voting on the minutes. Um, I don't think you all meant to abstain.
Yeah, can we, do you want me to start over?
You have to vote individually as a Board of Trustees when your name is called.
Right. All right, let's start, let's start over.
Darius Anderson.
Yeah.
Arnaldo Valles.
Yes.
Connie Conway.
Yes.
Amy Costa. Tom Epstein.
Yes.
Jolena Grande.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Man Fawn.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Yeah.
Valerie Shaw.
Yeah.
Blasvia Lobos.
Yeah.
Alex Walker Griffin.
Yes.
Alexis Saragosa.
She didn't...
So, okay.
Oh, she's not voting, I'm sorry.
But, um, what we can do is to, um, we can take the vote of a student. Oh, we have one student already. Got it. Okay.
And just with, uh, with Member Costa, um, she wasn't here, so I think she should be recorded as an abstain.
Got it.
Okay, we're off to a rousing start here. Um, the, uh, next item is the online college update by our new CEO, Heather Hiles.
Thank you very much. Um, very exciting to be here, and, um, uh, the, uh, the short bullet version of what I'm going to talk about is we are in motion. We have a lot of momentum, and we are being very, very productive already. Um, so I'm going to give you an overview, just a reminder of what, what we're here to do, but then, um, get into a little bit of the structure that's starting to take place, and review, um, the high-level milestones that we've set out for the rest of this year. Okay? Um, and also talk through the, um, existing budget as it stands, um, through the end of February. So, just as a reminder, uh, this whole online community college was really set up to address the needs of the eight million-plus people who are either unemployed or underemployed, and who desperately need, uh, access to the right content, the right opportunities, um, to continue to provide a pathway towards upward, uh, economic mobility. And, uh, we will be offering flexible, affordable, skills-based programs that provide economic value for both working adults as well as for employers. Um, the way that we're going to do this concretely for the learner, um, or the working adult, is to prepare them for, uh, with the right content that is connected to specific jobs that are well-paying, that are, uh, that are advancement-oriented. And, um, this is one of the reasons why we're so concerned with what are the right pathways for people, so that, um, people develop a mindset of advancement and ongoing learning and ongoing achievement, as opposed to one job that, that may not exist in its same format in decades to come. Secondly, we will promote our adult learners, um, through career preparation, through career placement, through, um, and on into post-employment supports to make sure that they stay successful. And finally, um, while we're preparing and promoting people, finally, um, well, not finally, but in the process, we will be placing them into well-paying careers. Um, I wanted to, uh, though, spend a little bit of time specifically on the draft principles, and the reason that this is so foundational to me and so important is that it's, it's very critical to me that we are all aligned in what are the, um, primary values and principles or tenants that we should abide by as we're continuing to build, um, as of yet, an unbuilt system. Uh, we're really forging, we're, we're blazing new trails, and we need to make sure that as we go along and we're doing, um, things at a large scale very quickly, that we all have agreement about what are the values that we, we should make sure that we're held to as we continue to progress. And so, I, um, have a combination, oh, there you go, thank you. Um, we're going, we're on the principles slide. Um, I've, I've created two different buckets. One is about the principles about the people, the people that we're serving, who are at the heart of what we're doing. And secondly, about the processes, the way in which we want to do business or not do business. Um, so on the principle side, and again, this is a, a draft, because I, I want to make sure that we get input from all of you trustees, and then we will continue to work with other stakeholders in our community to make sure that they are aligned with our principles, and that they also help, um, refine, um, our principles as we move, move ahead. But first and foremost, um, we are building this for our California adult learners, who will become the builders, the mentors, and the developers of the college. It's important to me that they not only have buy-in into what we're doing, but really, they become the workforce of the future to continue to evolve our platform and our college. Secondly, that our adult learners deserve and, um, will receive the best of the best. Um, in my thirty years of experience in education technology especially, and workforce development technology, typically, public school students and typically, people who are at the lower economic echelons of society get the worst of technology and the worst of services. So we're just going to flip that right on its head and make sure people receive the best of the best. Next, um, that we will meet people where they, where they start. And so it's important that we build solutions that are agile, that understand where people are, what their needs are as working adults, as parents, as, as children taking care of their parents, uh, et cetera, and that we be flexible and adaptive so that we really do complement the strengths that they've already, um, got. So we're working from an asset-building perspective. Next is that we will be human-centered in the development of all of our systems and programs. So again, it's understanding the humans that we, um, aspire to serve, and then we only succeed when we really, um, take care of, of their specific needs. Also, we want to, in the process, make sure that we are providing people agency, that they have a sense that they are, um, forever more employ- employable and resilient, and they have clarity on, on their needs, and that they have the agency to control their own information and their own destiny. So, for example, with the issue of, um, personal data, that's a very big one, where we want to make sure that people are making choices about what kinds of data are shared with, with whom. And then finally, and, and, um, this could have easily been the first principle, um, but we will provide access, um, to people with the right content, the right information, the right supports, the right, um, pathways to credentials, and we will make sure that this is free or incredibly low cost, so that nobody is, um, uh, unable to, uh, obtain and, and participate in our system due to, um, economic circumstance. On the process side, we want to make sure that we're going to deliver, um, impact at scale. So when I said at least eight million people are underemployed or unemployed, I, I really do think the number is closer to ten million Californians. And, um, we want to make sure that we are building a s- truly scalable system, um, and that we are continuing to, um, learn through, um, inventing innovation, inva- innovation and experimentation. So, really, um, I know this was envisioned on the front end, but we're, we need to be an R and D lab, and we need to make sure that we are accounting for what doesn't work for, um, people at sca- um, at a large scale, on a large scale, and what does work. Uh, we want to make sure that we both individualize but can scale, so that, um, this is a system that's, um, uh, amenable to all of that growth. Um, finally, we want to make sure that what we learn and innovate around, um, best practices helps inform and benefits the entire community college system. We also want to make sure that, um, employers will pay qualified, uh, when qualified online learners are placed into jobs, that employers will pay for them to learn along the way. Um, so often, employers these days are creating new jobs that really only the masters of how to do those jobs reside within those companies. So, um, said another way, we believe that employers should pay people to learn their jobs, and, um, that's another process principle that is, um, very important to us. And we want to leverage as many rich and abundant resources that are available to us throughout the state of California. We have so much, um, at our fingertips that I think, um, so many resources that have yet to be tapped, and so we're, um, very, very committed to that. And we're committed to also sharing, in a very open and transparent way, what doesn't work as well as what does work, because that's the only way that, um, all of our workforce development systems, not only in this state but throughout the country, will get better, is if we share, um, what is scalable, what's working for different populations, and what doesn't work. Okay, um, so I want to just, I want to share that and invite you all to consider, to, you know, meditate on those, consider those, and, um, please, in other environments, let us, um, know what could be added, what we're missing. Um, and did you have a, was there a question?
No, I figured if, like, you get through your whole program, then people can...
Okay, perfect, perfect. Um, so, if you go to Slide six, we could jump over the Advisory Board just briefly. Um, one of the things that I've spent a lot of time doing since we've, um, since I've been on the job, is starting to draft out the work streams that are before us, um, because there are a lot of mov- moving pieces to the system, um, that need to, uh, work in conjunction with one another. And, um, and I don't know if, I hope this is helpful to break it into two different buckets, one around college operations, and the other around adult learner and employer operations. But, um, and these are not, per se, the titles of the executive team, um, and, and roles and responsibilities yet, but I wanted to give you, like I said, a sense of the work streams that are before us. Naturally, on the college, um, operations, finance, administration, and legal are, are, are very important. Maybe less traditional, um, are R and D and engineering and technology, but clearly with, um, an upskilling platform that can be available to, available to people, um, real-time and all the time, we've, we've got a lot of techno- technological advancements, um, to, uh, and services to bring and make available to our users, and probably a lot of technological, um, supports to build that have yet to exist. We've also got a lot of product management, communications, and marketing needs, and naturally, we need a, um, a place to hold, um, to hold close all of the people and cultural, um, considerations. Um, one of the very important things to me is that, again, from day one, we bake in a process that is genuinely inclusive, um, culturally competent, meaning we really understand the needs of our target, um, customers and learners, and that we have a team that is functional, um, and supports each other to get all of this hard work done. On the, uh, learner and employer operations, naturally, we need a head of learning, and, um, and there may, you may see some, um, non-traditional kinds of roles related to, um, the, uh, learning department, but a lot of that will also, um, include, um, curriculum and content development, um, instruction design, as well as user design, et cetera, et cetera. Um, we also need a keeper of the learner's success, and what that means is, there are so many supports, um, which somebody who doesn't have a lot of social capital or is new into the workforce needs in order to assure their success over time. So while they're in work experiences, they may need mentorship and tutoring, uh, while they're learning, but even once they're placed into a job, they require a lot of, um, post-employment coaching and supports. And then, um, and then there are a lot of employment and placement activities, and I think about this at a very high level as, um, a key partnership role, where we need to have, um, very deep understandings with employers about the, all the ways in which we can, uh, partner with them, but same is true, uh, with the unions that we will work with, as well as with community-based, um, partnerships. And, and then, um, we also need somebody, I think, as a head of our community college partnerships, just because there are so many resources and opportunities for partnering with the bricks and mortar community colleges, that I think we're going to need somebody to head that, um, type of partnership as well. Um, and so in addition to that, we have been looking at building a, um, a high-level technological, or a technology advisory council, as well as an employment advisory council. The reason being is that, at least on the technology side, there are so many large platforms that we could leverage, that we should partner with, that we make decisions upon, and frankly, having big investments from big tech companies to help us achieve our goals, I think, would be, would be wise of us. So we will have, um, people who are, um, committed to our mission, who have scaled, uh, large-scale technologies, um, who can oversee what we're doing, or at least provide resources and support our processes. Um, finally, I wanted to go through, almost finally, I wanted to go through the milestones, if you could go, go to the next slide. And, uh, just bring your attention to a couple of the really big milestones, um, that are before us. First off, um, we do need to, uh, have a final and, um, and, uh, solid budget for the, um, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year. And so, uh, we will have a final budget, we hope to have a final budget approved by, um, by mid-August. Um, and so, eh, you know, I'm putting up these, I'm reminding us of these milestones, because we've got to reverse engineer all the work that happens to achieve those. Um, and we'll, we can talk more about the budget later if we have questions. Um, secondly, I am in the process of starting to, um, source and build out job descriptions for our executive team, and we hope to have the executive team seated by our June, by the beginning of June. And, um, once the executive team is staffed, then we can go about building out the various teams underneath those. But, um, I have crafted, um, draft job descriptions that will then be refined, once we have a recruiter in place to work with us on those. Um, the, uh, from a technological perspective, we will have our MVP of our first training platform ready and up and going by October one. And, um, in conjunction that, what, in conjunction with that, we will have our first medical coding, which is our health, first healthcare, um, pathway job, uh, training program up and going, as well as our first IT pathway, which will be a cybersecurity, um, training program. And so both those training programs, uh, again, a minimal viable product, um, meaning we will take the core of what we've worked with, um, the core curricula, and enhance it to, um, build out our first model of training programs, but we, again, we intend to, to use that as, um, a learning opportunity, as well as, you know, a starting point for us. Um, back, um, towards the beginning, and, and, um, where I'm living a lot right now, is that we have yet to, uh, complete our branding work that IDEO did a great job of starting for us. They did a lot of good research, um, but we have yet to secure the right college name and the right branding, um, approach, and we certainly don't have a brand book. So we're, um, going to, we're heavily in process of completing the work with IDEO and engaging, um, new supports for the naming and the branding, and doing, um, our first level of market research, where we really build the feedback and in that, um, input from our target population. Um, already on Friday, we were going, uh, through with our, with our interim acting team right now, um, and we were talking about the fact that, um, that our target market is comprised major- is comprised primarily of, um, single moms who have between one and two children. Uh, fifty-five percent of those women are Latina, and, um, and we're just starting to scratch the surface of understanding both the psychographics, as well as the demographics of our target market. Um, so we have a lot of market research to not only understand who they are, but where they are, what their needs are, so that we're offering them the right kinds of supports. Um, I think that those are the highlights for us on the milestones. And then our, yeah, and then our last, last slide is, I just wanted to give you a financial update. This is, uh, through the, uh, end of February, and, um, what you'll see is that although, uh, for this fiscal year, we were budgeted to spend about three million dollars, we have spent seven hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. The majority of the seven hundred thousand dollars you'll see is actually in the one-time bucket, and that's because, um, it was a lot, we made, um, primarily legal expenditures, um, to, to do a lot of setup work, as well as the recruiter who was paid to find me. So, um, in the future, I think that this, maybe the three-million-dollar budget wasn't quite as apropos, um, and instructional as, uh, future budgets should be, but we will be building, um, three-year financial projections, um, in short order, that show you how, what our path of scaling looks like. And, um, and that one will be then where we're presenting and, and giving you information about actuals compared to budget, so that you can, um, we can all learn together about what's realistic in terms of our plans and what is real in the actuals. Um, I think that that is what I have for you. The, the final thing that I would add is that there are three key activities that, um, that I have a lot of, um, urgency around, um, getting done very quickly. The first, you'll, you'll hear in my presentation of a contract for support to do recruiting, but in, um, in our next board meeting, um, and possibly even the executive board meeting, you will hear more about the work that we need to do with branding and naming and market research to get that work completed, as well as some, um, additional team development work that I think is essential that we do, starting now. So I think that's it.
Thank you. I suspect there'll be a few questions, so, uh, we're open for business here. Yes, Jolena.
To say that you've gotten started at a snail's pace would be erroneous. You have run the track and blown at least what I anticipated seeing, uh, for your first report out of the water. Thank you so much for taking the charge on this, Heather. I think we are headed in the right direction, and I just have a, a couple of questions for you. With these draft principles, as well as the, um, advisory councils, and your mention of an interim team, can you tell me what faculty voices were included in the design of the draft principles, the, um, culmination of the two advisory councils, and where our budget is right now?
Sure. So, uh, to start with the draft principles, um, I started honestly by reviewing all the materials that you all had alre- had already created prior to my coming on board, and then I circulated the draft principles with, uh, Tom and Pam, our President and Vice President, just to, and Eloy, to just to see if it felt like we were on the same page. And then I wanted to share out to the rest of the Board of Trustees to continue to ask for additional input. Um, also, trustee Costa. Also, Trustee Costa had input into them as well. So it's just the beginning of a conversation. I did get to meet with the CEOs from many of the community colleges and districts in San Diego about a week ago, a couple weeks ago, lost track of time. But, and I also got to hear a lot of good input from them at that session. We spent like a, almost a couple hours together, and I got a lot of good input. And so that's my primary answer about the kinds of input I've received thus far. And, and then, did you have, was there a part two of the?
Just wondering.
Faculty?
Right. And if there's anything included on the interim?
On the interim, yes. We're working with a woman, Roz, is just how I know her. What's, I don't know her last name.
Rosalyn Haley.
Haley. And she has been helping us with working on accreditation, pursuit of accreditation, because it's so important that we access Title IV monies to help our students get the resources so that they can participate in our programs. And she's got over 30 years' experience. It seems like she's worked in every aspect of the community college system, from enrollment to accreditation, to instruction development. And she's been just a godsend to us. Yeah.
Member Costa.
Just, I want to echo my colleagues' comments, that I think you're really cooking with gasoline. It's nice to see this team starting to take shape and really propel this work forward. I also want to piggyback on her comment on the principles, which, as she was talking, I, I do think that there's, and I don't know which bucket it goes into. I actually like how you presented it versus how we debated it in written form. It's a little bit easier. But I think there's something missing around instruction and curriculum, and I don't really know which bucket it falls into. But clearly, the faculty and how they design the curriculum and how they deliver it will be a key component of the success of this endeavor. And so to Jelena's point, I don't know if you want to, you know, reach out further to stakeholders to kind of further refine that. And then just lastly, on the college name, I have a crazy idea, which is, you know, so far, it's been a really internal endeavor, as we've tried to kind of get this online college up and running. And I hear you say that you want to kind of pressure test the ideas on branding with our, with our potential students. Maybe we ask them what it should be called, and you have a contest.
Yes.
Because this would be the perfect thing to crowdsource.
Yes, exactly.
And, you know, rather than us trying to anticipate what it is, maybe they can tell us.
No, you're taking a little of the wind out of my sails, but that's exactly what we intend to do, actually. I've never built marketing materials without actually message testing pretty much every word. I'm very empirically driven in that way. And I think it would be irresponsible for us to create a name without running it past a significant sample size of people, but also getting people to recommend. We've actually had a challenge grant going, which is about to complete a competition for ideas about one interventions and what, what supports students need. And we've gotten about 200 responses from faculty and from students in the community college system. And, and so we, that's not exactly the target market for getting the name right, but the target market of those eight million people who don't know of any resources out there to serve them is who we actually have to hear from. These people are actually everywhere around us, everywhere we go, but not very well-understood and forgotten every single day. And some of us even forget to see people who are those people struggling, you know, driving Uber and doing three or four jobs just to make it work. And so those are the people we need to hear from and get their recommendations.
I think there is. Uh, Member Anderson.
Thank you. I too echo what my colleagues have said. Very impressive, very excited. I had a technical question, I think for Member Haynes. Haynes, you've sat on a Board of Trustees, because it's very different than the Board of Governors. How structurally do you traditionally work it when you're at a local Board of Trustees? Are there committees? I guess what I'm wondering is, are some of us going to be able to serve, for example, Member Costa, is she going to be on the Budget and Finance Committee? Because as I look at this, there really is no, where the Board of Governors has the Chancellor to go ahead and be, you know, cover our back, and the staff and everything else, we are sort of the last line of defense, if you will.
So to answer your question, yes. Boards of Trustees do have, can determine committees that they wish to serve on. But that's not the only practice so far. But it is, it can be a good practice if one keeps in mind the timeliness of those, and, and makes certain that what comes out of, out of that is sort of actionable. Community colleges at every level has committees. It has faculty committees, it has hiring committees, so that's not unusual. What I would say is that there's also a practice among some districts, and actually, mine is, is one of those, of really not having any committees unless there is sort of a reason. And then you have an ad hoc, you set up an ad hoc committee. When it's time to, to hire a chancellor, we have an ad hoc committee that sort of does that legwork on behalf of the board, and then presents back, back to the board. So, so you can do it either way. So, and in many cases, we have 114 examples out there. There are, there are community college districts that take the work seriously, and they are, they are invested in making certain that some of those key issues, like, like the budget, is one that they want to make certain that they have all of the information, and they can share that back to their colleagues on the board.
Yeah. And my, my only thought is, because the fact, it, it's one thing if we're inheriting a, you know, 50-year-old organization, and we continue to maintain that, this is brand new. And I think at least around budget and finance and those type of things, I, you know, I would like to see some type of committee working with the president.
Do you want to talk about your committees?
Sure. A, a couple thoughts. One is that I did want to share, we do have monthly meetings. Every other month, we meet with the executive committee, and then the other, every other month is the Board of Trustees. I have to be candid, I think additional meetings later on could be very cumbersome. That's a very frequent timeline for keeping all of the information going. And I have been in organizations that become so performative that really their best function is presenting, not doing. And I'm very concerned, I've done, I've started up six different organizations, I'm very concerned about getting too many meetings in the work, in the, in the way of doing the actual work. We do, we are working on very intensive financial projections, but I, I'm not quite sure why we would need a, an ad hoc committee or a budget committee to oversee those financial projections in lieu of just presenting to the executive committee and then socializing it like that. So I, I'm having difficulty understanding that. I will say, and this is why I mentioned the Tech, Technology Advisory Council, for example, that's a great example where going beyond the technological expertise of these trustees, and looking out into the, into the, especially in California, into the resources of large-scale technologists who have, who have scaled up, you know, companies that, that serve millions and millions of people, I think would be very wise of us to get that input and counsel. And I would love to have trustees be part of those councils, because I think that that's a great way to, you know, leverage our relationships with our other players out there. But again, internally, I'm very concerned about us getting all the aggressive stuff we have on our milestones if we are in meetings internally too often.
Yeah, and also on the, we've spoken about this Technology Advisory Council, and we, as, as Heather mentioned, that, that we would like to have board members on it, and we were actually thinking of you, Member Anderson, and, and Member Rawlings, as, as potential members of that. So, and there are also, you know, she, she didn't mention, but there's also an Employment Advisory Council that would be comprised of employers and labor.
And labor, exactly. Yeah. And again, because it, it really does take the whole village to, to pull this whole ecosystem value chain together. And, and so I do, my guess is, you all being externally focused and bringing more of those resources in and helping us leverage them might be something that's more supportive of us than overseeing the internal work that we're going to be doing.
Okay. I think, I think Member Baum had a comment.
Thank you, President Hiles. Appreciate the review, the overview, and you're off to, clearly off to a strong start. And the board, obviously, is very enthusiastic about the direction you're leading. My anxiety right now is that six months from, just about six months from now, we're supposed to launch four online programs on an online platform. And so I want to know what is our plan to get to that? Because do we have curriculum that we already have in development? And I, I do want to echo Trustee Grandy's point, too, that it's very important to have the faculty, speaking of the faculty, and including and integrating faculty voices into the process. And when, and the people principles, when it says adult learners should be the builders, mentors, and developers, I think they are builders and mentors and developers, but there will be other builders and mentors and developers of the program. Because what happens if, if six months from now, we don't have a platform, we don't have a medical coding curriculum, we don't have that? Do we have the ability to extend that? Or, or where do we have to do that? So that's just something I, I want to be mindful of going forward. We don't have to go into it all right now. And I don't want our focus on branding and marketing to overshadow our need to launch these programs, too. Now, I know to launch a website, you do need your branding in place and all that, too.
I do, actually.
Of course, yeah. So I, I understand that. But those are my cautions. I want to deliver what we promised to the taxpayers.
Member Avila.
Thank you very much for your presentation. You know, in addition to what's been stated, when you think about hiring, which is very important, the first question I have is, have we hired a recruiting agency yet? Second is, you know, what are the top three positions that you're hiring for? And by when do you expect those to be hired? And those are my two questions.
Great segue, if we don't have any other questions.
All right. Got, Member Fong?
Just really quick on, on Trustee Baum's, it's a statutory deadline, and it's the first cohort. So it's not four programs, it's one cohort. And so I just think that's an important distinction. I take everything that you're saying, but the envelope is maybe a little bit more manageable? I don't know, I defer to the president on that, but.
And, and we've already got it in the works. And just to, to respond to that point, there are great curricula to build around for medical coding already in existence. In addition, SEIU and the, the employers that we have engaged are already at the ready. So we're in the process of building out the programs. And there's just no way, it's not, they're not going to start on October 1st, is my answer, honestly. And then the other program, cybersecurity, we came across a faculty member at Community College of San Francisco, Richard Wu, who is one of the cutting-edge, most prolific curricula builders for cybersecurity. So we've already got a star in terms of that content. And there are 725,000 unfilled jobs in cybersecurity right this minute, and they're from very low-tech to very high-tech. So you can improve your salary by about $20,000 at the low-tech side, just with a cybersecurity certificate. So these are meaningful jobs, meaningful programs, and we're working from the root of the curricula within the community college system, and then just building a lot of enhancements, both in assessing and building people up and recruiting them, as well as placing them. And then to the question of the positions that I'm going to hire, that's actually the next item on our agenda, specifically to talk about the recruiter, so that we can bring in our first kind of executive-level folks to get them building out their teams.
Member Fong?
Thank you. And I too want to add my welcome and appreciation for your overview of what's ahead. I'm confident with the hiring of the CTO that in a few months, we'll have the platform up and running by researching the various curriculums around the state and creating our own here. But maybe, Amy, oh, she's got. Somebody has the answer to this question. Do, is there a number of students that by December 1st, we have to enroll in as the first cohort, or no? So it could, it could be five students, or it could be 500 students, then? In terms of the first cohort?
Theoretically, yes.
What, then, what is our target in terms of by December 2019? How many students do we possibly think that we should have in a cohort that is meaningful or significant to what we're seeking to accomplish? Do you have that in mind?
Because we actually are going to put online two different tracks, one being cybersecurity, the other being medical coding, I think at least 100 people per track would, would be a reasonable start.
Any other questions from the board? Okay. Now, we're going to go into closed session to, to discuss the position of Chief Technology Officer, and we will be back. I'm not sure when, but you're welcome to stay in this room, and the board is going to move down the hall to a, to a different room. Thanks.